Meeting. And Mrs. Parrish, announcements and planning updates, please.
The only announcement is a reminder that the July 4th Planning Commission meeting is canceled, so the next meeting will be July 18th.
All right? Is that all right with everyone? Okay. You've had time to look over the minutes, and do I have a motion to accept their minutes?
May I approve?
We have a motion and a second. All of those in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Unfinished business. Okay. And before us, we have a review and approval of plat X18-0001 pool exception request.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The exception request before you this evening is an exception to the subdivision ordinance, and what it is, is to allow a pool within the 100-foot wide scenic buffer. Within the subdivision ordinance, there is a requirement for a 100-foot wide scenic buffer along the public roadways, and that buffer, it requires that the trees and vegetation within that buffer remain in place and that no construction occur within the buffer. There are some exceptions for things such as driveways and fences. The Planning Commission is also able to grant exceptions due to hardship or in cases of land parcel shape, that type of exception. What you see before you this evening is a plat that shows Lot 1 within the woods of Catharpen. The sketched on here is the proposed location for the pool. As you can see, this isn't to scale, but it is partially within the scenic buffer area. You can see with the house, the driveway, the well is located here, there is a gas tank buried here, their drain field is here, as well as their reserve drain field in this area. The area within the scenic buffer on this portion is pretty heavily wooded. There are trees within this area, and there is a community fence that extends to about this point right here along the roadway. And here is a view to show that. You can see the roadway just beyond the trees that are located here. So the pool would be visible from the roadway as you travel past. So what the applicant has proposed is an above-ground pool, treated in the manner that you see in this photograph here, so that it's aesthetically pleasing and meets the intent of the scenic buffer, which is simply not to have a lot of encroachments within the scenic buffer area. There is a fence around the top of the enclosure that hides the base of the above-ground pool. So I think, you know, that certainly is consistent with the ordinance as it stands. So what the applicant is seeking this evening is an exception from the Planning Commission to allow this above-ground pool within the scenic buffer, and the reasons are essentially, the hardship essentially is, as I described earlier. This is about the only place on the property where they could reasonably fit a pool.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mrs. Parrish at this time?
Just one. How close to the house is this pool? You had a picture there.
Yes, they...
Is this the house right here? The steps going up the house?
Right, that's the back deck. So the back deck would actually be connected with the deck of the pool itself, so it would be right adjacent to the back deck.
Okay, and they won't be cutting any trees down?
They will not be cutting any trees down. It will all go within this grassy area.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, Wanda, this is not a public hearing, of course.
That's correct. It's simply a vote.
And it's simply a vote. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second? All of those in favor of the motion, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Six. I want you to throw one. All right. That brings us on down to our first public hearing, SUP 17-0005 Mineral Springs Plantation, LLC, Columbia Gas of Virginia. And Kimberly, I believe you have that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is a request on behalf of Columbia Gas of Virginia for special use permit to allow for a public utility light on rural-zoned property located in the Mineral Springs Plantation subdivision. Specifically, the special use will allow a PIG insertion facility to be located on a portion of the property. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. Here's an aerial image of the property highlighted. The lot is approximately five acres and is located on Hunting Run Drive, right here. As you can see, it's surrounded by other large lots within the subdivision, all approximately five acres. You will also see the proximity of the reservoir here to the north, and you can also see the gas line running along this corner here. And this highlight is kind of covering it up, but there's another gas line that runs on the edge of this property as well.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
Is this wooded property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they're just going to disturb just enough to put this facility in?
Yes, sir, and I'll show you more detail of that further in the presentation. Here's a zoning map, again with the property highlighted. All of the surrounding properties are zoned rural. The future land use designation for this property and the surrounding area is rural residential. Public utility infrastructure is typically always considered compatible with any land use designation, since this provides a public service to the county. Here is a picture of what a PIG insertion facility looks like. PIG stands for Pipeline Insertion Gauge. And what you see here are above-ground tank pipes. These are empty. They are connected to the main line, but right here, these are ports that allow those pipeline inspection gauges to be inserted into the pipeline to inspect the line, to perform maintenance on the line, to collect data on the line for maintenance. So this is simply an empty above-ground facility, pipeline facility. Here's the GDP. You'll see the access is provided from Hunting Run Drive. As Mr. Thompson, this is a completely wooded site, so there is going to be some clearing to accommodate the access road and the facility itself. The facility, all of it in total, is .68 acres. The entrance will be paved per VDOT standards. The access road itself will be gravel, and inside the fenced facility will be gravel as well. The entire facility will be fenced, and the site, the beginning of the fenced facility, it's approximately 225 feet off of the right-of-way from Hunting Run Drive. Columbia Gas will inspect this site once every two months, and those maintenance operations I was just describing, they occur annually, so the traffic impact from this use is very minimal. The fencing surround the facility will be screened on all sides with forest green slats, and landscaping, as you can see depicted here, will be provided. What's proposed are holly trees. They'll be six feet at the time of planting. The fence itself is six feet as well, so you will not be able to see within this facility. The facility, as I said, only consumes .65 acres of the property. Nothing proposed with this special use permit is going to restrict the remainder of the property from being developed as a residential lot. So it's just on this front portion. The owner of the lot is Mineral Springs Plantation LLC, the developer of the community, and they did secure access to the remainder of the lot. There's also preserved earthworks that are on the very rear of this lot. They're over 500 feet away from this facility. They will not be disturbed with this use as well. And it's also important to note that the Mineral Springs Plantation HOA and Architectural Review Committee reviewed this, and they found it to be consistent with their covenants and restrictions. Here is a view east. This is standing on Hunting Run Drive, looking at the existing gas line easement that runs along the side of the property line. So the access is going to run along, right along this side, and you can see these pink flag areas. This is where the fenced facility will begin. This is a view west. This is standing from the edge of the fenced facility, looking at Hunting Run Drive. So you can see that existing vegetation that's there, that will remain there. And then this is the view south. This is the closest residence. So you'll see there's existing vegetation. The other portion of the gas line that's being put in on this side of the property, on the south side of the property, is right in between, and this house, it's at least 500 feet away. Findings in favor of the use, it is consistent and compatible with the development district and land use designation as per the comprehensive plan. The visual impacts have been mitigated with the proposed landscaping and the existing vegetation on site that will be retained. The proposal does provide a necessary piece of public infrastructure, which will enhance the efficiency and safety to serve the county population. Findings against are that while there is existing vegetation, while they are providing the additional landscaping, there are still going to be points of visibility from both Hunting Run Drive and the neighboring properties. Based on the findings in favor, staff is recommending approval with conditions. The first condition be that the site be developed in conformance with the generalized development plan, that the facility be completely fenced, and that all fencing will be at least six feet in height and screened with the forest green slats they detailed on the GDP, and also that landscaping be provided around the facility as shown on the GDP in order to screen the facility from the public right-of-way and adjacent properties. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant's representatives are here to answer any questions as well.
For members, do you have any questions or comments for the staff? All right. With that, I will open the public hearing. And Mrs. Parrish, will you go over the policy, please?
Yes. This is the first of two public hearings this evening. After the staff presentation, the applicant has 10 minutes to speak. Following that is an opportunity for citizens to comment. Please come to the podium and state your name in either your voting district or your address for the record. There's a timer on the podium that will show green when you're able to speak, yellow when you have one minute left, and red when your time is up. If you're an individual, you'll have three minutes, and if you're with a group, you'll have five minutes. Please let me know that right up front so that I can get the timer set right. And following the citizen comment, will be another five-minute period for the applicant to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Brian Mitchell with Town Site Engineering. I'm here representing Columbia Gas of Virginia. We're in agreement with staff's recommendations on this, and are in agreement with the conditions, and we would certainly hope that you'll support us in this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Paulette, do we have anyone that has signed up? No one has signed up. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this zoning at this time, for or against? Seeing no one rise, then I close the public hearing. So I guess that the applicant does not have any rebuttal because no one spoke? All right. I spoke to Mr. Newhouse about this, and he was satisfied with it, and he said that he had no problems at this time. So do we have a motion to approve this or disapprove?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve SUP 17-0005 with the conditions as outlined in the county staff report.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe we have six. Okay? Thank you. Now we come to the next case, which is R17-0011. And therefore, Wanda, would you like to go ahead and give it again on the procedure, please? We can let Leon go first. Okay. We'll let you go first. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Madam Chair, before we begin, we have a housekeeping issue related to the case that we need to address. Prior to tonight, staff discovered that the proffers contain some language that is not in compliance with the new proffer guidelines from the Commonwealth, and also that the county has adopted a new CIP, which will be in effect when this case moves forward to the board of supervisors, and the proffers may have to be adjusted to deal with that CIP, the new CIP. With that being said, the applicant has agreed to amend their proffers to address the issue of the inappropriate language, and in accordance with our county code, which states that proffers have to be submitted 14 days prior to a hearing, we will have to continue tonight's public hearing to July 18th. We can proceed tonight and open the public hearing, but the commission should hold open the hearing and continue it to the 18th to allow the commission, if you so choose, to recommend the applicant's proffers to the board. So I just wanted to let that out there.
When you say CIP, what's a CIP for? What?
The Capital Improvements Plan, which is essentially the county's long-range plan for capital facilities improvements in the county.
Transportation issues?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Public libraries, schools.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
With that, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. As you stated, this is a request to rezone 9.62 acres from rural to planned development 2, PDH 2, with proffers for the construction of 19 single-family detached homes on tax parcels 21-21, 2, and 3. The property is located at the northwest quadrant of Old Plank Road and Andorra Drive with 618 plus or minus feet of frontage along Old Plank and 207 plus or minus feet of fringe on Andorra Drive. The property lies in an area associated with the Chancellor Battlefield, and to date, the applicant has not conducted a field study to determine if there are any historic resources on the property. There is an existing home on the corner that will be demolished. A community meeting on the project was held in November of 2007. Citizens came out and raised concerns about traffic on Old Plank and at the intersection of Andorra, and also raised objections to any connection to Ashley Park. Staff has received several calls in the past few days regarding the rezoning, and each of the citizens expressed concern about the current traffic conditions on Old Plank and at the intersection. The applicant has offered proffers to help offset potential impacts of the proposed project in accordance with Dakota, Virginia guidelines. Staff does recommend approval of the case. This is a zoning map, and as you can see, the subject parcels are outlined in red. You can see the properties to the west and north of Andorra are all zoned R U. The properties to the east of Andorra and to the south of Old Plank are all zoned R 1.
The DSS on their affairs, and to speak out, if you would, for the...
This aerial view shows the subject parcels in red and the dominant development pattern in the area of single-family residential development, with a church across the street from the subject parcel outlined in orange and a community center in yellow on the south side of Old Plank Road. Ashley Park, the adjacent subdivision highlighted in blue, is currently 244 lots with a density of 2.4 units per acre with an average lot size of 16,000 square feet. Ashley Park South, on the southern side of Old Plank, excuse me, has 79 lots and a density of 2.2 units per acre with an average lot size of 21,000 square feet. The Grantwood subdivision noted in purple has 85 lots with a density of 2.7 units per acre with an average lot size of 16,000 square feet, and has an entrance which is about 450 feet east of the intersection of Old Plank and Andorra Drive, generally in this area here.
While you're there, may I ask you a question? Am I...
Mr. Thompson, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Have I heard that there's going to be improvement at that intersection?
Yeah, the county's CIP contains a project for improvements at that intersection.
That's the reason I asked you about the CIP. I was thinking that it was a CIP, that improvement on that area was being proposed.
According to the complaint, we can use school ball fields.
Okay, thank you.
Falcon Ridge subdivision adjacent to Grantwood and on the south side of Plank Road is 191 lots and has a density of 2.3 units per acre with an average lot size of 14,000 square feet. So you can see from the image here, this project is consistent with the surrounding development patterns of single-family residential development. This is the applicant's generalized development plan and proposed layout. The PDH 2 district has an open space requirement of 30%. This layout has 31% open space around the perimeter of the project, and along the eastern, I'm sorry, the western boundary along here, there is an existing 10-foot conservation easement that is recorded. So there's a 10-foot strip essentially for the entire boundary that will remain undisturbed. The proposed lots range in size from a minimum of 10,000 square feet up to 15,000 square feet, and as you can see, the project will be served by a single entrance on Old Plank with two cul-de-sacs. The northern cul-de-sac terminates at the property boundary in accordance with VDOT SSAR regulations. The applicant requested and was granted a waiver to making a connection on T-Side Drive and Ashley Park. The Virginia Department of Transportation commented in review that at the time of site plan review, the applicant will have to conduct turn lane warn analysis for right and left turn lanes into the project. The streets will have sidewalks internal to the project and along the frontage of the project. The entrance, as shown, is approximately 500 feet west of the intersection of Andorra and Plank and lines up with the driveway between the church and the single-family residence. So essentially here, this is the driveway, and this is, of course, the project entrance. As noted, the concerns raised by citizens relate to traffic, the level of service at the intersection during peak travel times. County staff and the board are aware of the issue and have identified funds in the Capital Improvements Plan to address the design of the intersection. The applicant has proper dedication to right-of-way along the project frontage to assist with any future road improvements to Andorra and Old Plank Road. As noted, the project will have a single access. Currently, the AM and PM traffic hours, peak traffic hours, the intersection operates at a failing level of service. Andorra Drive currently has 7,750 daily trips, and Old Plank has 12,552 daily trips. The proposed improvement at the intersection is a roundabout, which will allow free-flowing traffic movement, eliminating the current stop condition, which facilitates the backups at the three-way stop. The sheriff's office reported a three-year total of nine accidents at the intersection, and they also reported that they had conducted 40-plus traffic stops at this intersection. No specific detail on what those stops were at that intersection. So this is a view of the intersection looking north at Andorra Drive. The arrow is pointing to the subject property there on the west. This view is looking down Old Plank Road.
Go back to the other one, please. Where is the roundabout supposed to be?
It would be essentially where you see that intersection.
Okay.
It may not be on that exact alignment, but that's essentially the condition that would be remedied by a roundabout.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
This is a view looking west along Old Plank Road. The subject property is here on the right side. This is the county's community center here. The entrance to the project is down a little bit further, almost where that red car is, actually. This is a view looking back towards the intersection on Old Plank Road, and I'm standing at this point at the entrance, essentially where the entrance to the project will be. As you can see, the driveway in this area here, and then the entrance will be here. And the arrow, of course, represents the subject property, the single-family residence at this location right here.
Just a moment, Leon. Yes, Mrs. Smith?
Leon, just to go back to that intersection, the proposed roundabout, obviously that's going to take some other property there. Has that already been, has VDOT already got that property, or they're in negotiations?
Well, the current design that I've seen, the roundabout can be accommodated with property from the subject property and county property. The county owns property at that intersection as well, so...
The community center you're talking about?
The community center, yes, sir. So it would not take the community center, but there's sufficient property. There are about two parcels there. Actually, there are three parcels that the county owns at that intersection. They kind of stack on one another.
So it's not going to affect any other property?
It may affect the property on this side of the street, for sure.
And VDOT has not, to your knowledge of the county, gotten that property yet or gotten no? So that's all still down the road?
That's part of the project, and the acquisition and developing the project will be acquiring additional right-of-way.
So that's in the CIP, correct? Of doing that intersection?
Yes.
Do we don't have a timeframe?
Well, the dollars are allocated in the CIP in 2021 with $600,000, and then in 2023, another $900,000. So essentially, if you follow that timeline and it was fully funded, say, in 2023, you'd probably be a year out from that before you start a construction, at least. And this is purely speculation, so...
Right, okay. All right, thank you.
I'm still mixed up. Mr. Smith asked a question about the property. Is, did the applicant, would they own that property that would have to be taken? I mean, that would have to be what Mr. Smith was asking about?
They own a portion of the property. They don't own property on this side of the street, on the eastern side of Andorra Drive.
Okay.
But they do own all the property here, and the design, like I said, that's why I made the statement that it may not align specifically with how this intersection is set up right now. So it may be askew a bit so that the majority of the construction can take place on property that is already in the hands of either the county or the applicant.
Okay.
But there will probably be some right-of-way acquisition needed on the eastern side of Andorra Drive.
All right, thank you.
And the applicant can speak to that if they like to. So this is another view looking at the subject property directly at where the proposed entrance will be. As you can see, there's a church there on the south side of Old Plank Road, and this is a view looking directly into the subject property, directly where the access to the project will be. And I did receive a call from the property owner who lives just next to this access point, and he did express some concerns about the traffic, but was satisfied, I guess, with the fact that there would be some future improvements at the intersection that would help him get out of his driveway.
Mr. Smith?
This might be a better question for the applicant, but I guess my concern is, if this is approved, that subdivision will be put in before that intersection's, anything's done with it. Am I correct?
You probably are correct, but understand, there's going to be a lag in the time that, let's say this gets approved, there'll be a lag between the time that they go to site plan, get site plan approval, and so when you look at the timeline, there could be, if it works out, as much as a year lag. Now, the other variable in that is that if the county receives any funding through VDOT, and there are two potential mechanisms to receive funding, either through the revenue sharing program or possibly the smart-scale program. So there are two application rounds that will occur in 2019 and then again in 2020. So if the county receives funding through those two mechanisms... So if the county receives funding through those two mechanisms, then that will accelerate the course of timeline. But that is an application process and we have to compete for those funds and there's no guarantee that we'll get them.
Right, so if it's approved, then it'll be a while before that intersection is corrected to handle the traffic. Is that a fair statement?
Oh, no, that's an accurate statement. But I can, the number of vehicles put into this intersection by this project, 190 vehicles per day, is a very small impact with the current level of service. It's not going to degrade the level of service. I mean, the level of service is poor now at peak hour and so you'd essentially be putting 190 new vehicles per day and I think Dan worked it out to like three per hour over the course of a day with 190 vehicle trips.
All right, continue.
So the Spotsman County Comprehensive Plan presents a long-range land use vision for the county. The comprehensive plan sets forth principles, goals, policies, and implementation techniques that will guide the development activity within the county. The proposal is located within the primary development boundary. Lands within the limits of the primary development boundary are intended to develop with higher density residential uses and more intensive commercial uses. This area of the county has a low-density residential designation on the future land use map, a designation reserved for single-family attached and detached residences in a typical suburban area with a possible overall density of up to four units per acre. This proposal is designed with a density of 1.9 units per acre. The Ashley Ridge proposal that we are considering tonight and the use and density is consistent with the low-density residential designation envisioned in the area and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The proffer analysis, the applicant has offered proffers, and as I stated, they would have to be an amendment. The applicant has proffered conformance with the generalized development plan. Staff is supportive of this proposal as it is an onsite proffer which addresses impacts within the boundaries of the property. The GDP identifies areas of preservation, right-of-way dedication, and pedestrian accommodations for the project. The proffers limit the use of the property to 19 single-family detached units. Staff is supportive of this language, again, as it is an onsite proffer which addresses impacts within the boundaries of the property. The property, as I said, limits the use to single-family detached units and the number of units that will be allowed at 19. The applicant has proffered dedication to right-of-way to facilitate future road improvements and there again, we are supportive of this language as it is an onsite proffer which addresses impacts associated with the additional vehicle trips by the project. It is consistent with the county's thoroughfare plan and the right-of-way dedication is within the boundaries of the property. Like I said before, Old Plank and Andorra experience failing levels of service during the AM and PM traffic hours and future improvements to the intersection are contemplated to improve levels of service. The applicant has committed a cash contribution to help mitigate the impacts to the public safety and parks. Ashley Ridge will generate additional demands on public safety. There's an addition, there's existing capacity at Fire Station 5 and sufficient to accommodate projected calls. And additionally, Ashley Ridge will have an impact on parks and wrecks and which capacity needs are identified at a level of service standards in the facilities element of the comprehensive plan. The applicant provided an FIA which estimated the home values to be at $391,500. Homes assessed that this value would generate revenues that would exceed the county's expenditures for, expenditures for the new citizens. Staff ran its own analysis using assessed values with comparables valued at $261,000 and at this value, the homes do not generate revenues that would exceed the expenditures of the new citizen. The proposed project is projected to generate 11 students that will attend Wilderness Elementary, Freedom Middle, and Riverbend High Schools. So key findings are that the project is appropriately located in the primary development boundary and is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. The applicant has offered $161 per unit to mitigate impacts on capital facilities. The applicant has proffered the dedication to right-of-way. The project as proposed provides 2.9 acres of open space around the perimeter of the project with a 10-foot conservation easement adjacent to Ashley Park and the proposed project is consistent with the existing development pattern of single-family homes of the surrounding neighborhoods. Findings against is based on the assessed value that staff used of $261,000, the project wouldn't generate sufficient revenues to exceed expenditures for the new citizens. There, no evidence has been provided to verify the presence or lack thereof of any significant historic resources on the site and the project generates additional vehicle trips to the network that is currently operating below acceptable levels of service. So the recommendation with the applicant's proffers is noted, the staff does recommend approval of R-170011. It is in performance with the comp plan, it exceeds minimum requirements, and is consistent with the surrounding development patterns. And this concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Leon. Are there any questions for Leon at this time?
I have one, Leon. You said there were 90-some trips per day?
It would be 190 trips per day.
190 trips per day? And you just told us the formula they use is three per hour?
I think when you spread those 190 trips out over the course of the day, it's like three per hour.
Yeah, but who's driving around 2:00 and 3:00 and 12 o'clock creating a traffic problem out there? All this traffic's going to be there during peak hours in the morning and evening. So that formula's bottomless. Thank you.
Here's the transportation expert, yes.
It's actually based on the peak hour, which were, PM peak hour is 20 trips. So in an hour, it would be, it would be basically five trips every 15 minutes. So that's not a lot of, that's not a lot of trips.
So it's based on the peak trips?
Yes.
Peak hours and not the 24-hour shift?
Yes, the 190 trips are based on the daily trips.
Thank you.
Good. Are there any other questions at this time? Thank you, Leon. And at this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Chris Hornung. I reside in the city of Fredericksburg and I am representing the landowner on this project. I also have with me Samer Shalabi, who also represents the landowner, and Justin Franklin, who is a civil engineer on this project. First, I want to make a quick clarification of a phrase that Leon used in the beginning about an inappropriate language in the proffers. I didn't want that to be confusing. The proffers under the dollar amount specified that the county could use the money in the proffers for whatever category they wished and that is an old proffer language. It's no longer allowed based on the proffer law. So when staff brought that to our attention, we agreed to strike that and so that's the purpose behind having to resubmit the proffers. Just thought it sounded a little unusual to say that there was inappropriate language there and wanted to clarify that. Also in the meeting, it said there was a community meeting held in 2017. That meeting was actually in 2016 and there were public meetings prior to that for another application that you all know about from the property owners, their original intent for the development of this project. After those community meetings, we listened to the citizens' concerns. The concerns that we heard had to do with the use, traffic, all the things that Leon brought up and we immediately started working on solutions. The solution that was worked on was the traffic circle that you are hearing about that's in the CIP. The genesis for that was our discussions with VDOT and the county to try to find ways that we could mitigate impacts of this project and also help the existing road system and find a solution. Not only did we help work on a design for the traffic circle, we agreed to donate the right-of-way for it and we actually have, the landowner has a contract on the piece of property on the opposite side of the road that would be needed for the traffic circle that they are willing to donate to the county at no cost. Unfortunately, because that is an off-site area, we were informed that that could not be proffered under the current proffer law. However, the owner's commitment to donate it still stands but is not part of this application because we were told by staff that that could not be included in the proffer statement. The intent is to develop this property for single-family residential homes that are consistent with the surrounding area. The current owner will be looking to sell the property as is to either a national or regional home builder to build the project. They have no intent of holding on to the property, developing themselves, building the homes, or owning it after the fact. They're looking to find a reputable builder to build the homes consistent with the development patterns of the area. If you notice that on the Ashley Park design or in the aerial that Leon showed, Ashley Park was originally designed to be extended to the east and that's why T-Side Drive was sort of left with a stubout so that that development pattern could continue to the east, consistent with Ashley Park, more of the same. That's what we're proposing. However, when we put together the original proposal, what we heard from the residents from Ashley Park was that they did not want traffic from this project coming through their community. And so we worked with VDOT and we submitted requests to eliminate the requirement to connect to T-Side and were granted that request. So there is no through connection to Ashley Park, which was at the request of that community. We also worked to try to address traffic generated from our project. The GDP shows a left turn lane into this project on Old Plank so that left-turning movements won't stop traffic on Old Plank from going through. They'll be able to do that from an independent turn lane and that work will require improvements on the property side of the road and right-of-way on that side, but will not require any additional right-of-way take from anyone else up and down Old Plank Road. The traffic and just to talk about the timing, I think Leon had mentioned a year. I think we would be, the owner would be delighted if it was possible to go from zoning to site plan approval to construction to home construction and actually have homes ready in 12 months. That's just simply not possible. This process will continue at least for another three months. Then you have a site plan process. They have to find a builder to purchase the property. They have to agree to terms, they have to close on that piece of property. Then they have to do the site design, then they have to start construction, and then they have to start building homes. My estimation is they'd be lucky to have the first homes in two years. Probably looking 30 months before you actually have houses being built and probably 36 to beyond actually before this project is completely developed. So it's not a quick timeline. The process takes a while to go through. That's essentially what I wanted to point out as part of this presentation. I'm willing to take any questions you may have and address any comments that the public may have following this. Thank you.
The instructions are as the same as for the last public hearing. Please approach the podium and state your name and either your address or voting district for the record. The timer will show green during your time period until it turns yellow. That means you have one minute and when it turns red, the time is up. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. First, I have Judith Steele followed by Michael Barker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Judith Steele and I live in the chancellor district. I'm a retired ER nurse as well as a first responder for the chancellor volunteer fire department. And my concern does have to do with not so much the traffic, but the width of the road and as, even though it's really nice that they're talking about putting in a circle, that does not address the fact that that is a two-lane, very narrow road from that point further, even further down to the intersection of Plank Route 3. It is very hard for emergency vehicles to maneuver through those areas when the traffic is at its maximum. I own property very close to that area. I have run those roads with the fire department. I cannot foresee how adding more traffic to that area is going to benefit anyone. As you can see from Leon's presentation, the congestion of houses that is already present in that area, and though 19 more may not seem like a lot, an increase of 190 vehicles is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Barker followed by Lee Young.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Barker. I vote in the Belmont District. I do travel that road every day, going to work. It is a very congested area. What you've heard is much more congested than what you have heard. In the evening, in the mornings, it's heavily congested area right there. One thing I want to touch on is you talk about nine acres of land and you want to put 19 homes. I think that's an awful lot of homes in nine acres. And we're talking about drain fields and how is this going to support, these nine acres going to support 19 homes in drain fields? It's a lot of homes. I think it ought to be, whatever it's cited for, it should be approved for and nothing more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Lee Young followed by Rob Decoito.
Good evening, I'm Lee Young. I live on Andorra Drive. I experienced that traffic every day since 2004 when I moved in. I understood when I purchased what I was in for and it's steadily increased over the years. And people sit and throw numbers out in front of everybody, oh, you know, 190 trips. Well, when I sit in my driveway trying to get out on Andorra Drive on certain times, I sit there for five or six minutes just trying to get out of my driveway and that's fighting people coming from a stop sign. They're going to put a circle in there so now people don't stop? I'm never getting out of my driveway. Not to mention everybody else who has to just travel through that area, the other people, my neighbors, we're held hostage every day to the traffic flow. And that piece of property, it's fine for housing, but not 19 homes. I mean, that's, it's bad enough as it is. And, you know, trying to take the rest of that Andorra Drive and turn it into, you know, more lanes or make the roads wider, I mean, you're just taking more people's homes and their properties to accomplish that. There's no place for that on Andorra Drive. I mean, it's bad enough because of the density of homes that are in the vicinity as it is. We don't need any more. If it was to be sold and developed, there's definitely got to be a limit and I believe it's three homes as the way it's done now and that's what it should be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Decoito followed by Jim Joyce.
Hi, my name's Rob Decoit and I live in the chancellor area at Ashley Park. I have an opening comment or two and then I have six questions and comments that I'd like to just put down for the record and I'll try to move quickly. First of all, I don't feel that comparison of this property to the existing neighborhoods is relevant. The relevant factor is the community service capacity and the traffic capacity, not just relative to this proposed plan, but from miles around that feeds that intersection. So question one is considering the future land use map is already focused on and allowed a rezoning from rural to low-density residential, is low density not sufficient to build the residences that are proposed because variances will not likely be achieved and this is a way to circumvent that? And if so, what are those variances that would not probably be approved right now? Two, if rezoning to planned development housing two is approved, can the residential plan change to a higher per-unit density without a public hearing by whoever buys the property and plans to develop it? I have concerns there. Three, considering the proposed traffic circle requires a purchase of a quarter acre from some property on the northeast and some community property to satisfy the requirements to build the circle, what is the alternate plan if they, if those... the circle, what is the alternate plan if those properties can't be acquired? I don't think that the expense of us in the community losing community property is a solution to a private venture. Four thousand dollars per unit compensation might help put a traffic light or two up for the county, but it does not help the residents. It's not a compensation. It doesn't help. It doesn't solve the problem. The construction alone at that intersection, for quite some time, will be a detriment to the community. Is it worth it? I don't think so. Four, residents, Riverbend High School. The capacity was noted as already being insufficient, or overcapacity. I would like to see some more information. I don't think it's enough. There's a lot going on with the other schools feeding the high school in the next few years. That capacity, we need to understand that. Is it ten really in three years, or is it just three right now, or overcapacity? Also, will variances be required if it were to be rezoned? I'd like to know what those are in regards to erosion, stormwater, Chesapeake. Will waivers have to be the hundred-foot buffer? Reductions seventy-five percent, forty percent for minerals and sediment? They must be achieved if rezoning is approved. And the last point is, assuming the county-owned property can be sacrificed to serve this private venture, if it, or, excuse me, if it can't be achieved, it goes back to my other question, what is the alternate plan that's not proposed? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jim Joyce, followed by Lisa Cotton.
First of all, hi, ladies and gentlemen. A number of you know me from a number of years here in the county, the things I've been doing. I represent the Ashley Park HOA, the two-hundred-and-thirty-eight members, so that should adjust my time. And before I start, would I be able to have access to that floor computer and the floor mic with Leon's assistance? I just want to look at a couple of maps that are on there that would help me. You can just back it up, Leon, I appreciate that. Right, not, next one? There, thank you. All right, so, let me start with first a couple of my points. I represent the two-hundred-and-thirty-eight members of the community. I've been the Ashley Park HOA president for thirteen years, so I'm pretty familiar with the area. Okay, I've seen it go from a sleepy little area to a very busy area. And that road, Andorra, Old Plank Road, over by the Tabanaca Church and at that intersection where the Chancellor Community Building is, is very busy in the mornings. In fact, traffic backs up all the way to our neighborhood. It is nearly impossible to get out during school time, and it's nearly impossible to get out in the evenings sometimes. And there have been a number of accidents at our neighborhood exit and entrance, right there, that one that we have. And it's because of, honestly, it's young drivers, inexperienced drivers, who go out and don't see the traffic coming because of people dropping in the turn lane, and they get whacked. Okay, my daughter was actually a passenger when that happened to her. Okay, so that's another thing that we need to look at, is that traffic right there at that intersection. And honestly, you probably want to go back and look at Catharpen, because when that road was, you know, zoned for where it is right now, we didn't have the subdivision, we didn't have the build-out over in Sawhill. We didn't have the build-out of Hardwood Estates, and a number of other build-outs that have happened along Catharpen Road. Okay, so those are things you need to look at, because that does have an impact on that intersection, and it does impact every one of us. Okay? A couple of other things. The T-Side cul-de-sac, the main reason I'm here is not to be for or against this project. That is not my place as the HOA president. Okay, because I have not pulled my membership to find out where they stand on this. So, it would be inappropriate for me to vote either way on this. However, what I do represent is the preservation of that easement that we have, that ten-foot easement that was discussed as a permanent conservation easement, and it allows the residents of those properties to enjoy their backyards without fear of encroachment, and not necessarily even having to put a fence up, because many of them would probably be forced to put a fence up if they had anything going up to that property. Now, understand, Mr. Hornung, that that easement is in place. I just want to make sure that we keep that in place, because I know easement's going to be revoked. Okay? So, I am strongly in favor of keeping that easement. And it goes from Old Plank Road all the way down to the last property, the end of Stonehenge Drive. And it's a very long property, if you look at it. And you can see it on that map, where that blue goes back at the beginning of the farthest west property. It's pretty far down there. And those are three separate properties, by the way, and those, as you know, were going to be combined into one. Okay? The other thing that wasn't discussed is the traffic coming out of the Chancellor Building. That can get quite dicey, quite sporty, okay, for people trying to get in and out of there, and that is an accident waiting to happen, and it has happened. Okay? To address the Sheriff's Department, they do sit in that lot, and most of their tickets, those forty that were cited, for dead tags, dead inspections. Okay, because they sit there and just pop people left and right. I know, my wife got one. Okay? I got a court date next month. All right? I got a phone call over there. So, I've talked about the traffic backup, new subdivisions, easement allowing, traffic stops at Chancellor Building, traffic accidents at both the Chancellor Building and Ashley Park, and the intersection. If you can back that map up, where you showed the plat map? There, thank you. So, that, and this is, I'm just commenting in general here on this, because I've actually been involved with some of this. You can see where the traffic circle, that white section there in the first lot on the eastern side of the three lots, you can see right there, I assume that is going to be part of that traffic circle. So, that, I just want to point that out, that it is on there. Now, I know this is normally, I just talk and y'all listen, but I'd like to ask if you have any questions of me, since I am very intimately familiar with that property, lived there for thirteen years, raised three kids, put them through high school. So, is there anything that you'd like to ask me? Because some of your questions, I got the answers for, but I'm not going to speak up in your hearing. Well, barring any questions, I yield the remainder of my time to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Cotton, followed by Carl Valentine.
Hi, my name's Lisa Cotton. I live at eleven-nine-oh-five T-Side Drive. We've lived there since 2001. We have three kids, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, only one's driving. Every morning when we leave for school, we leave out of Ashley Park, and we take a right, because there's no way we're getting out. People will avoid eye contact. It's almost impossible. There's no stoplight there, so for safety, with my seventeen-year-old, we turn right. We go to school that way, and it works. We've seen accidents in the morning, in the evening, and the afternoon. It's just a tough intersection. People come over the hill, coming from the west, heading east. I cannot imagine, although I appreciate the idea of the flow of a traffic circle. I like traffic circles. I like that people at the community center would be able to get in and out easier than they currently can. I just don't know that a left-hand turn going into this new subdivision is going to be enough. I don't know how people would be able to get out of the new subdivision and head towards that traffic circle. Because if I can't get out, I don't know how far Ashley Park is from the intersection of Andorra and Old Plank, but it's much further than Ashley Ridge would be. So, if I can't get out and make a left out of my own subdivision, I don't know how people, or school buses, or EMT, police officers, I don't know how they're going to be able to get out without having to turn their sirens on, but maybe, maybe traffic will allow the school bus to come in and out. I just think that even five hundred feet away, or six hundred feet, I forget exactly what the number was that was mentioned, but that's still so close to that intersection. I think that it's just going to cause a lot of trouble, potentially accidents, I don't know, but my main concern is the traffic. My other concern is, is since we live towards the end of T-Side Drive, I'm just a couple houses away from the end of the cul-de-sac, and I'm glad that we were able, as a homeowners' association, to buy that easement. But it looked from the picture up, the slide up on Leon's computer right now, it looked as if that's all that's going to be. It looks as if the lots are going to come pretty well up to that, and I'm assuming all the trees have to go, except for perhaps that ten-inch or ten-foot easement? I don't know. So, that's a question I have. And then the last question I have is, would the left-hand turn lane into the development that was mentioned, would that be put in before construction begins? Because if it's not, I think that's going to be awfully difficult getting large trucks with supplies and concrete and all those things in. So, that's it, I guess. My main concern is traffic, and I don't feel any better leaving the meeting tonight about it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Carl Valentine, and after this gentleman, that's the last person that signed up.
Thank you.
The map that you just had up there, I was here maybe a year ago, and I made a recommendation, there was another matter altogether, but I mentioned the area that I lived in, in Ashley Park, and the fact that I hoped that they would consider putting in what now they want to put in is that circle. From what I'm hearing, that circle, and what I've seen on the sheets that are in this packet, that circle is not a very large one. It's smaller than the one over by the hospital off of Cowan Boulevard. And I don't know if a school bus would go around there easily. It's going to be a difficult thing. I know that before, I had wondered why is Ashley Park Boulevard, it ends at a dead end, because they said, "We can't build beyond this point." And Route Three is a short distance away, so I hope some of the body will look at the maps and see if it's possible that that could be extended, because I know it puts more problems there on Route Three. But I think it may come out close to where that new store that everybody wants to go to, and they make all sorts of turns to get there. But I hope that you'll consider putting in a stoplight at Ashley Park off of Old Plank, because that is a dangerous place, and I don't care of the time of day. There are times that traffic unexpectedly comes in the middle of the day, and I know in the morning, my bedroom, I'm eighty years old, so I sleep a little bit later than some of you in the morning, but I hear the traffic at five o'clock. I hear it right behind my house. I hear it before that even, and especially if it's a motorcycle. My house is directly across the street from the sign for the Methodist Church, and so I hear that traffic. I like the idea of the circle, but it's too small, and somebody, this young lady here was talking about, she works for the fire department, and she knows that that road is narrow, Andorra Drive. My daughter and I, the previous speaker, went to all the houses on Andorra the last time we had a meeting, and we had a neighborhood meeting. And we knocked on doors, and we had to drive into those driveways and back out. I know it says "stop." And the speakers that live on that road are absolutely correct. You take your life into your hand. Some of those people almost have to drive, have to back out into the road, because, or they have had to build their own turnaround in their driveway in their front yard. Have a little pity on the people who live in the neighborhood. Oh, it's not nine acres for nineteen houses, it's six acres or a little less that have the nineteen houses. They have three acres set aside, plus the watershed area. So, it's not nine houses, not nineteen houses on nine acres.
Thank you. Since that's all that has signed up, you still have an opportunity to speak, if you would like to at this time, for or against. So, whoever would like to speak, come forward, please. Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, my name is Roger Toy. I live at one-two-nine-oh-three Mill Road. First of all, let me say that I'm here to support the project, and I'm recommending to this body that you approve it. I've heard comments from the audience here, and it seems as though most of them are concerned about the traffic. I believe, and let me just back up just one moment, I have not spoken to this young man about his project. I have not spoken to anybody in the county about the project. I'm doing this, as a matter of fact, I have opposed some of his projects. And I have, I have had the support of the county supervisors, as a matter of fact. But on this project, I think we should be fair, and I should, think we should listen to the project manager here. I believe he will have responses to some of the questions that have been raised here, including the traffic situation. I think we have to look at the exit and entrance to the development that is there. I do not believe that this project will have any adverse effect on the entrance and exit from that project. I believe it is too far. And I think, I do not believe that this project will have any adverse impact at this time. If there is any impact at all, which is debatable in my mind, is at Andorra and, at Andorra Drive. And therefore, the proposal that's been submitted by the project manager with regard to the traffic circle, or whatever, that it has been coordinated with the Virginia Department of Transportation, it has been coordinated with the county, and I believe that that is a fair situation that should be given to the project manager. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Toy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time on the case? Yes, come forward, please. She'll be through in just a few minutes, honey. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Sarah Toy, and the gentleman before me stole a bit of my thunder, but I'm going to just talk anyway. I agree that this project should be approved. I don't like development any more than anybody else does. In fact, I might like it a good deal less. We are not newcomers to the county, but we're not native here. We've only been here about thirty years. When we moved in, we didn't want Riverbend High School built. That took eighty-nine acres, pretty much right in front of where we lived. But we got Riverbend High School because we needed Riverbend High School. We really didn't want Harrison Crossing Shopping Center, but we got Harrison Crossing Shopping Center. That was two-hundred-and-forty acres that they took. You talk about long waits getting out. You should try getting out Spotswood Furnace Road in rush hour. The lights are very long when you're sitting there, when the kids are going to school or getting out of school. It's very long, and I guess what I'm getting at is, you have to live with some of this. These folks, I really appreciate their concerns, but they're way ahead of where we were when all these things were built, because there wasn't as much coordination with the county roads, with VDOT. It was like everything was built, and then, oh gee, we have to do something about the roads. And something is going to get built in a county like this that's growing, and you can, all you can do is hope that, and work to make sure that it goes as smoothly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Toy. And I believe there's someone else? Yes, come forward, please.
Evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Missy Arp. I live at one-two-zero-one-four Stonehenge Drive. My husband and son were in an accident right at where you're pulling out of our subdivision. He was turning left to go down towards Andorra. There was a camper, and there was a car behind that wasn't unable to be seen. He was almost T-boned right on his driver's door, but he pulled out. There needs to be something done about the traffic on that road. It is terrible. There are times you sit forever, and then there are times that you pull out, thinking that somebody is turning right, and you miss the car behind that. Adding more traffic to that, I think, will be terrible. It will be detrimental. School buses have to wait sometimes for I don't know how long to pull out from there, causing kids to be late. My kids do not have a consistent time coming home sometimes because of the traffic that is being held up there. I support development and expansion, but something has to be done with that road. And then you're talking about more traffic going on up maybe to Chancellor and Old Plank, and that's another intersection that needs to be addressed as well. Traffic is a terrible problem on that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Yes, please.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Cheryl Bowley, and I am a resident on Night Court, which actually butts part of the property, so all the way back by the storm drain easement, my property actually butts up to that property. So, I'm not opposed to the building of homes there. I actually think they've done a pretty good job making it consistent with what's already there. job making it consistent with what's already there. What I would like to see is that the gap between the physical improvements to the road systems happen concurrently with the construction that's being implemented and proposed. I think that if we're talking about roads being addressed in 2021 to 2023, I think I got that right, maybe not, but I think that's what I heard. My concern is that if we're building homes in two years, what about the timeframe between now and then? And capital improvements, though they're slated, are they guaranteed? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, rise. I now close the public hearing. No, no, I don't want to close the public hearing. I'm sorry. I knew I would do that. Okay. I will entertain a motion that the public hearing be continued to July 18th.
Would you like the applicant to have their opportunity to speak now?
Yes. Come on, please. We can really fill these things up.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it brief. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. The daily traffic volume for this project at 190 vehicles per day is 1 and 1/2% of the daily volume on Old Plank. Every year, the volume of traffic on Old Plank increases by 2%. So this project is less than one year of increase. And that's because of the growth that's going on by right outside of the area. What we felt is that we were proposing a project that was advancing a traffic improvement for relatively low additional volume of traffic on the road. We can't widen Old Plank. We can't fix all the roads in the county. We only have 16 net new lots on this piece of property. And we think we've done a very good job of promoting and advancing a project that will provide long-term improvements for everybody in that region, simply for nine acres of property. So we understand it's a traffic problem, but we feel that we have put together a proposal that is the best shot we can and the best we can do to help the entire region. And the traffic circle in itself is not required for our project. It's something we're proposing to help the entire area as far as giving the right of way and helping with the planning of that. I also wanted to come in, I understand the delay is on Ashley Park. The original design of Ashley Park is that road was supposed to go to Route 3. It was supposed to be extended towards Route 3. All of that, all that area was eventually supposed to have a second connection to Route 3. That was never done. That's one of the reasons why so many folks are coming, that's the only reason why they're all coming out in Old Plank, and why you have those delays, is that improvement was never completed. I don't know if it was a phased approach by a developer, if it was left for future development, but it was never built, and it's just simply stubbed for the future. The property will be tied to public sewer. There are no drain fields. So it will not impact drain fields in the area. The conservation easement that was talked about was a restrictive easement that was voluntarily agreed to outside of the zoning process by the landowner with the Ashley Park Homeowners Association. It's for the benefit of Ashley Park HOA. So only with the approval of Ashley Park's HOA can that easement be modified. And as far as the traffic circle design, the left turn lane, all the road improvements will be required to be put in for the development. The left turn lane will have to go in before the development can, with the development. So it has to be in prior to the homes being constructed, before the infrastructure is done. And the traffic circle will have to be done to VDOT standards, and they study turning movements for buses, trucks, and all of that. So the ultimate design will have to be designed to those standards to make sure it's got adequate turning radii for, for those types of vehicles. So thank you for the opportunity to respond to those.
Thank you. Sir, I believe you had an opportunity to speak, and you can address that to him later, okay? Privately. I think he'll be here that you can address him after this meeting, sir. Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Smith.
Leon, on the traffic study, the report that you got from the sheriff's office, was that just for that intersection, or was it for the whole stretch? What, so I guess my question is, did it go up to Chancellor Road? I mean, because it just seems like those accidents are a little low, those numbers for that area.
Those were specific to the intersection.
To the intersection?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My second question, didn't, hasn't, was there a subdivision approved down at Chancellor Road? And there are subdivisions there that's already been approved that's coming in?
It was Thorburn.
It's on, it's on Old Plank, but right, it's the, and I can't remember the name. It came before, so.
Thorburn, Thorburn Estates.
Thorburn, Thorburn Estates. During the traffic study, are, was that considered the traffic that's going to generate from that subdivision?
No, and there's a project at that intersection as well. There was applicant proffered dollars to improve that intersection. And so there's a proposed roundabout at that intersection also.
Right. But, but that traffic is still going to come down Plank Road?
It is, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Leon. There are nine acres here, right? And there are how many units? 17? 18?
19.
19 units. And gentleman said that some of that land's been set aside?
Well, I think what the gentleman was referring to is that once you account for the open space, and once you count, then you reduce that from the total acreage. So he was saying, because of the open space, then you only have a total of six acres.
I know, we do that all the time. We've got 40 acres, and we put all the houses in one spot, and you got all of it open. I think it's too congested, and I don't like it. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Since I made a mess a little bit ago, listen very carefully, okay? I will entertain a motion that the public hearing be continued to July 18th, an order that revised proffers may be accepted from the applicant in accordance with Spotsylvania County Code that states amended proffers must be submitted 14 days prior to the public hearing date. This will allow the applicant an opportunity to amend the proffers to address any issue related to language that conflicts with the new proffer legislation and any potential changes associated with the new CIP. Now, do I have a motion to that effect?
I make that motion.
Do we have a second? All of those in favor of the motion, the second, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we'll move on. I believe at this time we have our comprehensive plan update. Is that correct? Huh? Oh, we'll never stop it. I can't either. It's probably five and six minutes. I said mine always five and six minutes, and gas keeps going up. Okay, I believe you're ready.
Ready?
Go ahead, please.
This will be brief. I just wanted to show you the proposed fairly tentative schedule for the comprehensive plan update. It's probably going to take a good year to go through the process and get through to public hearing. It might be just a little bit longer, depending on, we have a lot of cases that are coming forward. So depending on how the public hearing cases hit the schedule, we may need to shift some of the comprehensive planned work sessions. But here before you, we're going to focus on the major components of the plan at work sessions. The Board of Supervisors expressed at the work session, that, the joint work session that we had with them, that they wanted to be very much involved in the transportation chapter and the prioritization of projects. So we're looking to have a board work session in August to discuss transportation, so that then the transportation committee can work in September and October to create that prioritized list of projects.
And that's just for the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, at this point, I was just proposing it be for the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
And so by November, we're hoping to have a draft plan that the Planning Commission is comfortable bringing forward for community input, so that we can have community meetings and then consider additional changes to the plan based on whatever comes out of those community meetings, and then work in, in the new year, editing, final edits, board work session, and then finally getting to the public hearing stage. I also wanted to bring to your attention that the Board of Supervisors has adopted a strategic plan. This is a 20-year vision that the Board has adopted and passed out copies of that plan for the Planning Commission.
Excuse me, Wanda?
Yes.
If I may interrupt you. This paper you just handed out, it says our vision?
Yes.
Is that supposed to replace our vision statement in the comp plan?
It's not.
Thank you.
It's, it's the Board of Supervisors' strategic plan for the organization as a whole. But when you review this, you'll notice a number of items in here that feed directly into the comprehensive plan, talking about infrastructure investment, growth management, character of the county. So I think that this will be a document that we'll want to have next to our comprehensive plan as we update it, to be sure that the comprehensive plan is consistent with the Board's vision that's identified here in the strategic plan. And just reviewing it, I've had an opportunity to review it against our current comprehensive plan, and I think they are very much consistent at this point in time. So just wanted to provide that to you so that you can have an opportunity to review it before our next work session. And that was all I wanted to review with you.
All right. Any questions for Wanda? Hey, Wanda, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any new business that we need to take up? Now it's time for public comment. Do we have anyone that's here that would like to speak to any subject at all and would like to speak at this time?
Ms. Carter, we have Bobby Straight from Virginia Organizing who has signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Straight, a volunteer with Virginia Organizing. Virginia Organizing is a nonprofit, nonpartisan grassroots community group that works with individuals within the community on pertinent issues. Your Fredericksburg chapter, and that's what I'm part of, is one of 11 of Virginia organizing chapters in the state of Virginia. What I'm here to speak with you about this evening is affordable housing. Specifically, this is an issue that Virginia Organizing has taken on for the community, and our focus is on affordable housing for working class people, those making those households with a total annual income of at least $24,000 per year, which is the U.S. federal poverty level, up to $61,000 per year, which is the Virginia Survival Budget, lumping housing, transportation, childcare, and everything like that together. This information comes from the ALIS population. We'll talk about that in just a minute. While that slide's up there, let me share with you why we are here. We want to talk about affordable housing, but why are we talking with the Spotsylvania County Commission? We are doing so to raise a public awareness on this issue, and we're doing so to elicit allies in support of this issue. And with you, ladies and gentlemen, being on the Planning Commission, things pass through you en route to your Board of Supervisors. What is ALIS? As you see, ALIS stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. These are working class people, one or more incomes per family, sometimes in excess of two jobs per family, struggling to make ends meet, and affordable housing is part of the issue. The ALIS report is a financial hardship report commissioned by United Ways of Virginia and published in 2017. So this is a snapshot in time of 2015 that was published in 2017. Let's look specifically at Spotsylvania County. Our focus in the Fredericksburg Chapter of Virginia Organizing is on Planning District 16, of which you know better than I, Spotsylvania County is part of Planning District 16. But let's look at Spotsylvania County. The ALIS population in this county, out of a total of 42,568 households, is 41% of those households. These are households, again, between 24,000 and 61,000 per year total household income. That equates to 17,452 households out of 42,568, 41%. Poverty population, household population in Spotsylvania County is 6%. That comes out, ladies and gentlemen, 2,554 households. If you lump the ALIS population in excess of 24,000 to $61,000 per year, with the poverty population, those households making less than $24,000 per year, that comes out to 47% of the total households in Spotsylvania County are struggling to achieve affordable housing. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a very, very significant number. Let's look at the larger Planning District 16. Here we are, Spotsylvania County, total household 41% ALIS, Fredericksburg City 39, down to King George with 23%, its total households being part of the ALIS population. And I keep repeating myself like a broken record. ALIS population is working class people doing what they're supposed to do, which is to work and support their families. These are not people, these are not homeless people, these are not the poverty population. This is the working class people of Planning District 16. Total households in Planning District 16, 115,800-plus, total ALIS households is 39,328, or 30, 34% of the total households in Planning District 16 fall within the ALIS population. Again, a very, very significant number. That, within the ALIS population, you're looking at, again, 24,000 to $61,000 per year, with rents running $1,000 per month for a one-bedroom apartment, up to $1,500 per month for a two-bedroom apartment, before someone buys, pays a car payment, the first gallon of gas, the first pound of food, shoes for the kids, lunch for the kids, or anything of that nature. There's not very much squeeze left on the other side of when you're paying those sort of rental rates. My time's up. I can stop. I have two more slides. If you'll let me slide through them.
Yes, Mr.?
Yeah. What did you say, a one-bed, one-bedroom house was rent?
A one-bedroom apartment starts around about $1,000. You can find them somewhat cheaper. You can find them at 850, 900, but you're looking at 1,000 for a one-bedroom.
Board members, I would like for him to continue. Is it okay with you all?
I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
The factors associated with this, the cost of land, we have spoken with builders, and the cost of land is one of the single largest factors that drive up the cost of everything, whether it's an apartment or it's a house. Zoning and building codes that increase the developer's cost per unit. Density limitations, vertical height, building limitations, the requirements for sidewalks, open space, energy efficiency, and such as that. Lack of government, local government mandate or authority to direct set-asides. Set-asides would be if a locality has the authority to do so, they can tell a developer, for every 90 units you build, 100 units you build, 10% will be set aside as affordable housing. Gentrification. And I'll add, we've provided this presentation to the Stafford County Planning Commission. We provided it to the Fredericksburg City Planning Commission. Gentrification increases adjacent property value, property taxes, and drives up rental costs. Now, who, and I'm not Now, who, and I'm not one of them, who would not like to live in these beautiful houses that are being built throughout Planning District 16? I think any one of us would. Maybe some of us do. But these houses are so far out of the reach of the ALIS population that there's just no correlation between those houses and $1,500, $1,000 apartments and what these people need. Not in my backyard. Some of the solutions to the, to the affordable housing issue might be greater density, higher construction, could be trailer parks, could potentially be modular home developments. And now we get into, again, not in my backyard, sort of philosophy. To be honest, there's a lack of political will to address the issue of affordable housing. Without that political will, it cannot be addressed. Recommended solutions: regulatory reform to decrease residential development cost. We need to incentivize, through tax incentives possibly, developers, landowners, and landlords. The sale of government-owned lands specifically for the development of affordable housing, income restricted. Public-private projects for development of affordable housing, political will. Perhaps locality seeking the creation of a housing trust, acquiring local regional authority for direction of set-asides, and local governments individually or collectively setting the conditions necessary for the development of affordable housing within Planning District 16. Bottom line, ladies and gentlemen, we are facing population growth. We know that. This is going to worsen this situation. The stagnation or only nominal increases in wages and salaries will likely increase the ALIS population, not decrease the population. Rising mortgage interest rates, which we already see on the horizon, will drive, will drive more people to rentals, will put additional, that will put additional pressure on rentals that will drive up rental costs and make them even less affordable for the ALIS population. The fix will require innovative, out-of-the-box approaches. Business as usual will not work. Local governments need to set the conditions necessary for the development of affordable housing. And I'll add, one last note, this is not just the responsibility of local governments. Local governments will need to facilitate this, but this will be a community effort. Businesses will need to be a part of it, and our individual citizens will need to be a part of it. If you have any questions, I thank you for your consideration, allowing me to have enough time to finish this brief.
Yes. Right.
Yes, I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that. Appreciate when information is provided for us that can help us just think about these issues. So I know the county's had several projects that have passed in the, in the past that have, and I'm speaking Spotsylvania specifically, obviously, that have been branded as affordable housing. And so my first question is, what, what is considered affordable housing? I know it's a bracket because you have your ALIS bracket of 24 to 61 or 62. What would be considered affordable housing?
Things are billed as affordable housing. Let's say that some people, there are some Section 8 out there, but Section 8 housing has been closed off due to the lack of funds. Section 8 housing is driven by the housing and urban development, I believe that's the correct term, where the renter himself picks up, or herself picks up 30%, and then the government picks up the other 70%. So we've had an apartment complex built out near Central Park, and, in Central Park, and those are coming in around $1,500 a month. They were advertised as affordable apartments. For someone, they are affordable, right? But not someone making $24,000 to $61,000 per year. I hope that answered your question, sir.
Somewhat, but yeah, it's hard to know prices of everything out there. But the other piece is, are you seeing wages picking up? I know you probably have, you know, at 24 to 62, which was from 2015.
Yes, sir.
Are you seeing anything that's anecdotal that may be saying, hey, it looks like wages are increasing, it looks like that number may slowly be increasing to help, right? So we bring prices down, we bring wages up, and somewhere in the middle, they meet. Have you seen any indication of that?
Only what I hear the news, just as you, ladies and gentlemen, hear the news. What I offer to you is that I think one of the potential solutions, and we don't claim to have the answer at Virginia Organizing, but we're studying this problem, and we're raising visibility, and we're offering potential solutions. Most, many of us inside this room are familiar with Levittown. It was built in 1948 in New York, and it became the template for suburban development in the United States of America. I don't know the size of the lot. I'm going to hazard a guess, they were less than a quarter-acre lots. They were 750 to 900-square-foot houses. Those houses still exist today, and they're being resold. They were well-built homes, and they were built for returning GIs that were not going to have that much income. So I think, again, we go back to the density of question, we go back to citizen participation. If I'm making $50,000 a year and I have to have a 3,000-square-foot house, or I'm going to think you're sliding me, well, I need to go find someplace else to live, all right? So I'm offering that smaller, not tiny houses, smaller houses, smaller apartments, less amenities, but still nice homes with solid-built, safe homes will be part of the solution to this. That will drive down costs for the developer, and that will drive down what it's going to cost someone to get into. I would offer to you, those income levels, $750 a month max, to include utilities, would be affordable.
I want to go back to his question. And I believe what he's trying to say. We have developers who come in front of us, and they say that they're going to build affordable homes. No one's identified what's affordable homes. I mean, you know, okay, so we're going to build affordable homes, and it's going to be $200,000 plus. So that's where I think that he's also coming from, is, how can I say that's not affordable? Because I don't know what affordable is.
I can give you a better answer, and I'm having to catch up with my own, in my own head here. The first house I bought in 1980, if I remember correctly, the rule of thumb at that time was 25% of your income go towards your total house and principal, your principal and interest payments on a house. They're, they're using the figure now 30%. That's the current figure. So 30% of $30,000 would equate to affordable housing for that income bracket, 30% of $60,000. I don't have the capacity to calculate that out in my head. That would be affordable housing for people within those income brackets. 30% is the rule of thumb. A $200,000 house is not affordable housing for someone making $61,000 a year. It simply isn't.
What is it?
Well, ma'am, I can't do that figure in my head. I'd have to have to calculate it here.
Do it on paper and send it to me.
But that's the rule of thumb, 30%. But what, a third of $60,000 a year would be $20,000, roughly, right? I think it'd be $18,000 a year. 0.3% of 61,000 would be roughly $18,000 a year.
Okay, I think this is a great program.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm, I'm all for helping people who are less fortunate. I mean, I see that, and I'm getting older and becoming less fortunate.
Yes, ma'am, if I could add, I'm tying up more of your time, cut me off.
No, that's okay.
This is going from young people, probably some of you, if not all of you, I certainly know some, young adults living in the bedroom they grew up with their parents. I say young adults, I'm not talking about 18-year-old, I'm talking about 26-year-old. Couples living in an in-law's basement. Senior citizens. I have a friend within Virginia Organizing, she's lucky enough that she found someone within her church that rents her a basement, apartment basement bedroom for $500 a month. So it crosses the age spectrum. It's not limited. But again, it's, it's working-class people. It is, it's working-class people.
And you talk about double-wise modular homes. I can go to Florida and show you beautiful developments that have modular homes and developments, and the seniors are really living in those. And it's okay for people who are beginning to start out. But here, you don't, you can't even ask for something like that.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. That's, that's where the political will comes in, ma'am.
That's where what?
The political will comes in. This, is this problem, it's my, obviously, I'm 65 years old. That's not old, but I've got a couple of years under my belt, is that in too many cases, nothing is a problem until it becomes a problem, right?
That's right.
And then we get this reflexive action, we have to do something, and we're 10 years behind the power curve. This is a problem now. 41% of a county's household populations, maybe it's hidden, maybe it hasn't got to a point yet to where the visibility is there, but that's just a very, very significant number, and we're talking about building 300, 400,000-dollar houses. And nothing wrong with that. But that completely leaves out only 9% less than one-half of the household population in the county. And I'm not pinging Spotsylvania County, as I showed you, this is, this is endemic across Planning District 16.
So what are you suggesting that we can do? I mean, I think everyone on this board has a heart, and they certainly want to help the people who are less fortunate. What can we do?
When we, when we offer a possibility is to incentivize, incentivize developers, landowners, and property owners, or landlords. I don't know in my mind, without being able to go into details, because I'm not a tax person, incentivize might involve tax abatements on the sale, on rentals, I don't know, ma'am. But it will take something. And in our discussion with, with the developers, and they said, something is absolutely true. If I'm in business, I'm not in, I'm not in business to lose money.
That's right.
I'm in business to make money, and that's perfectly legitimate. Capitalism is a wonderful part of our society. So they will have to be incentivized, something. Abatements on ordinances, and I don't think I'm using the right words here, but again, we talked density, both in a single area and vertically. Are there things that we require of developers and developments that are nice to have but are not necessary to have? Could those things be made to go away? Those are just, again, we don't have the answers. We have thought in speaking with developers and speaking with other people. We want to engage with everyone. We don't come to the table with, if you do this, you fix it. We come to the table with, this is an issue, and we're part, we hope, to be part of the solution as far as being part of the community movement in addressing this issue, ma'am. I hope I've answered your questions.
Yeah. Part of me, I'll get in touch with you.
I have a couple of questions.
Sir.
District 16, I may have missed this, but where did, how did you come up with these figures? 41% in Spotsylvania?
From the ALIS Report, sir. Commissioned by Virginia.
So how do, how do we get a copy of that report?
It is on the web, or I'll, I will send you the link, but if you go to Virginia United Ways ALIS Report, you can get it. I recommend, there's two documents on there that I'm aware of. There's the executive summary, which is 18 pages long, and there's the report, which is 200 or 300 and some pages long. I've not read the hundreds-page report, I've read the executive summary.
I have one other question.
Yes, sir.
Trailer parks.
Sir.
In District 16. Do you know what the average rental is for a trailer in a trailer park?
Yes, sir, I do not.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Of course.
I am a big, big proponent. I'm always talking, when I talk to a developer, about affordable housing, because I, as my children, my youngest is 18, I want them to live here. And I want them, us to be able to provide housing for county employees and workers that are in this, a lot of our county employees are in this bracket. And I think that a lot of us would be surprised if we looked at the schools in our district that are ECD, that are Title I. You might be surprised at the number of them, and that speaks to the ALIS Report, too, for that. So there's a definite need, and I'm glad that you're here to talk about it. I just think that when I met with the developer earlier this week, which would be yesterday, when I asked him about affordable housing, he was like, well, I really don't like to advertise it as affordable, because that runs a lot of my customers, you know, that's not what some buyers are looking for. But as a county, you know, person who's lived here my whole life, I'm looking for affordable for the generations of our citizens that have lived here their whole life, and we have to be cognizant of that. And so I'm glad that there's this organization. I didn't know, I didn't know what Virginia Organizing was, so I'm really glad that you came, and there are more people out there looking for that, because that's what we're going to need.
Yes, ma'am, and there's at least, I will not speak for them, but I participated in their forum for affordable housing, the Sponsored County League of Women Voters, and I provided a presentation. Their emphasis is on affordable housing for senior citizens. So there's, there's more than one group out here. I know of at least one other that's looking at this issue. They were just looking at a very specific section, and we've brought that out a little bit. So there are other groups working this issue.
Well, and you said incentives. And I don't believe, if I might turn to the county attorney, if a developer comes in, I, we do not have the authority to say, okay, yeah, you're going to get this rezoning, but your homes will have to only cost so and so. We can't do that, can we?
As I understand it, Mrs. Carter, generally, that is offered as part of the proffers if the developer so chooses, but I do not know off the top of my head, without doing some research, whether it's mandated or not. Given that I've been here two and a half years, and the number of proffers and the number of development documents that have crossed my desk, I have not seen that it is mandated in any way, shape, or form.
Question. This gentleman said that 10% should be, was a figure he threw out here for affordable housing. We don't have a number that they have to meet, do we? We don't have an ordinance that says so many affordable housing has to be built.
We do not.
It's our, it's our understanding that no local government, to include Fredericksburg City, has the authority to direct set-asides. That has to, I believe that has to come from the state. I mean, that is a state-given authority.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, we appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
We really, really do. And we will be back in touch with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And hoping that we can get some more information. And whatever you have, Paulette will be glad to receive it, and she'll give you our address so that she can get it to us, okay?
All right. Have a good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
And you have a blessed one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else sign up that would like to, public presentation? Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight? And no one rise? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.